Just always stay on axis of the microphone, basically. So if I'm looking this direction, or if I'm looking this direction, okay? And that just keeps you in the pattern cardioid microphone. These are super cardioid pattern. We have this many open microphones, you have to do something so that you don't get feedback. We tighten up the pattern of the microphone, which means you've got a sweet spot of about ten to twelve inches. Once I break that plane, I'm gone. It's off. Now I'm back on, okay? Thank you very much. Go ahead. What's that? I have watched every one of them.
So when someone is inaudible, you can tell what they're doing wrong?
Pretty much so. I'm gonna monitor tonight live. Yep. Yeah, I really haven't made any changes in settings and stuff. It's back to the original. I just wanted to, now, one thing that, and I'll let everybody know, and Jared and I have had these conversations. If you people rent out this room and they disconnect the sound system. Two meetings ago, Jared, was it? There was four or five of the microphones plugged into the wrong outlets. So I have your gain structure in particular set louder than I have Jay's because you have a softer voice than Jay's. Well, if yours gets switched. If yours gets switched, then Jay is in yours. Jay is now way too loud and you're way too soft. So we have to make sure that those stay in the proper numbers. They are numbered, the number matches what's on the setting of the sound system. So.
So you're suggesting that every time we have an event in here, you should come and check the mics or somebody needs to label them?
They are labeled, they just need to be put back in the correct order. So, okay.
Jerry being digital microphones when two people are talking at the same time, that makes a mess, right?
No. No issue at all. You and I can have conversation dead on back and forth and Jay join in and say, hey, guys. It'll pick it all up. Not.
The only issue really is that we're not twelve inches away from the mic at all times. So like backing up like this is bad, but if we stay within twelve inches of the mic.
Yeah, if you stay on axis, I can back up off the microphone some, but I'm still on axis of the pattern of it. Okay? Same here. Now, the sweet spot, if you take your hand and go like this, that's the sweet spot. That's what every microphone is adjusted for. And normally, and I'm using the key word normally, if you have a larger hand, you have a larger voice. So that's why you're gonna say, well, their hands different, but that's normally the sweet spot, okay? Well, listen, if I notice anything drastically wrong, I will let you go. Jared, are you back up and running? Okay? Good deal. All right? Yes.
So last week, when we had the mics going and something went wrong and we couldn't get on YouTube, and then we didn't have a camera that we could download the video tomorrow on YouTube, so we had to broadcast on Facebook. Is that true that we don't have a camera that we could just videotape the meeting?
You do not.
We don't.
Now. Let me retract that. You have the capability. You are not recording the meeting live. You're only going to Facebook Live. If you included software named OBS on a computer. OBS software is a free software that you can download the meeting at no charge and archive the meeting, edit the meeting, et cetera. Not my decision.
Yeah, that would be a topic during the council meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Jared.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. A little bit late, sorry to get started late. Welcome to the March eleventh, twenty twenty-five city council meeting. Call the order and a roll call, Ms. Klein.
Member Neiman?
Here.
Member Kelly?
Here.
Member Judd? Member Lovins?
Here.
Member Horton?
Here.
City Administrator Fawcett?
Here.
City Attorney Edmondson?
Here.
Member Neary?
Here.
We could all please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Well, now, first on the docket is the mayor's report. We don't have the mayor here tonight, but I understand he has recorded his report on the state of the city. Is that correct? So let's go ahead and get that started then.
I apologize that I cannot be there at the high school. I still am with you, mint surprise, we just like to be top or see government asking. In your progress, collaboration, mint, it's not just a city, they thrive. Thought I like to highlight the impressive stride in our financial health over the past year. Our city revenue continue to increase within our collective efforts. Last year, for the first time, increased the memory occupational passion of collecting our property back in the country, which is an important first in our budget. We are proud to maintain a net positive budget, ensuring that we are not just being our current, but also learning for the future. Our budget approach in recent years has not only stabilized our finances, but has strengthened our resilience as a community. Twenty twenty-four was even watershed over the city code enforcement department. Since the code enforcement identified vacant abandoned properties in the area for the last four years. The city finally addressed the last of our vacant abandoned properties that code enforcement identified. Since twenty twenty-one, sixty-three of these properties identified are addressed by code enforcement. Now here's a quick breakdown of those sixty-three properties. Five structures were demolished as their deed first condition. Twenty-six properties were rehabbed are now owner occupied properties. Eleven were rehabbed as rented properties. Six properties were rehabbed are currently art or sales of a limited capacity. Twelve properties are in the process of being rehabbed and three properties are currently not available. In addition, the economic, the code enforcement department, we had the first two-year inspection cycle last year after the city council adopted the rest of the license and safety inspection program. Of the six hundred and four residential blocks in this city, fifteen hundred eighty-seven properties passed nineteen-nine. This is backed by code enforcement department. That's, that's all part of our works, our infrastructure improvement. Over the past year, we've been several paid bribes in this city. We reap the second avenue, they forced the middle street industrial park. Forced the River Point Drive and Blue Ash Circle, installed new curb on Dayton by a new downtown park. In addition, sudden transportation staff and three hundred and thirty-two highway provide access to Port Thomas, Silver Grove, and Southern Central Town. These improvements fall into the safety and accessibility of our city. We also opened a long awaited area street connector at Manhattan Boulevard, which connects our cities to the Ohio River and brings our visitors to our short downtown businesses. In the center section, thanks to the grant from South Bank Park, we installed at no cost to the city electronic kiosks that allows people enjoying our town to learn more about our city and places. Our city landscaping initiatives have unified our public space, making it more attractive places to live or. In addition, we have invested in a new dump project other than for our public parks department, ensuring that we have the tools needed for ongoing maintenance and improvement. Finally, city council approved sidewalk apartment pad and cause care programs for the city homeowner who wish to improve the sidewalks around their home and develop off-street parking pads on their property. Take a look at our police department. I am pleased to report we had its new police vehicles for enhancing their capacity to serve and protect everyone. Police Chief David Hadfield successfully completed all three levels of the SBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Association leadership training course last year. Ensuring our performance is equipped with the latest leadership strategy. I also want to take a moment to recognize Officer Jacob Sett, who was recognized by the department as his officer of the year. His dedication and service exemplify the professionalism of our police force. City council also approved hiring a full-time social worker with the police department in our city, Annabel, to assist our officers build a family to the nation's social service. This program is being paid from the local itself, some of the funds that we receive on state. Finally, K-9 Cooper, Officer Cooper graduated from this narcotic drug offense, further empowering our team in combat substance-related issues. This year, our fire department welcomed Brent Shaffer as its new fire chief, whose leadership will guide us to a new era of safety and service. We're also proud to announce that fire department was recognized by single-listed healthcare who has poured the needle over for helping save lives and stroke patients from heart disease. Sir, Gordon, we feel meaningful, practical, and based on an administration of a powerful blood pressure, where it yields us. This recognition is best served through hard work, dedication to all firefighters, our DMP, and our paramedics. Last year, the city has seen continued economic development in our first residential industrial center. New residents opened on the city during twenty twenty-four were way there at Avenue that the first building in sixth Avenue, Elliot Coffee in the building in Sixth Avenue and Main Street that used to be a garage. GMV Bakery and Pontius Compensary on Second Avenue in the city industrial park. And Strangeways Taxi Company in the northern Kentucky and Best Amazons on Sixth Avenue. Two major residential developments went online in the city in twenty twenty-four. Rehabbing of the restored first building, a two million dollar project that created a serious or block style apartment on the bottom floors of the building. And Velo Residence Apartments, a thirty million dollar plus development of two hundred and sixty-five luxury apartments under Manhattan Boulevard next to Manhattan Harbor Yard. In addition, developers constructed several new residential buildings on Manhattan Boulevard and that's to continue to purchase and restore numerous homes throughout our city. Three business owners who manage the city's facade and crewing the ground to improve the size of their businesses, our simple businesses. Rose Room, Body of Art, the former cherry degree campus building on Sixth Avenue. Now rental reimbursement program also has this labor factor in any program. Finally, let's discuss our beautiful park. Sergeant Park received a significant investment for his state recreational program. More than a hundred thousand dollars spent on building new trails in his park and grand opening the new trail in the spring this year. Young Land Park, one of our favorite projects, is on the horizon through the construction of building park upgrades in twenty twenty-five. Putting improvements to shelter and bathrooms, pickleball courts, they got out fit as a Lincoln Elementary School council request of the recent. And several other improvements that will showcase our onlookers and providing quality outsource bases above all of our residents. The city also made several improvements to our heritage procedures this past year, including installation of a new roof on our garage, three new windows, a new floor, and fresh painted walls thanks to Councilmember Junior in the display area. Also, the city purchased nine wooden display cat for the display area. The museum board hopes to have the museum reopened in time for the next few months. There's planning a major exhibition this fall celebrating the city river history in conjunction with American River Roots Festival. So in closing, the compliments we celebrate today, the industry of the power of community collaboration and dedicated public service. We are moving forward together, making nature a place where families can flourish, businesses can thrive, and friendships can bloom. Thank you for your unlabored support. I would forward to continue this incredible journey together with you. Let's make the next year even more remarkable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. And. Also, I think this council last year, since we're talking about the state of the city. Thanks to City Administrator Fawcett, Mr. Edmondson, and the rest of the council, I think we passed over fifty ordinances and orders last year. So we're updating all the ordinances, some of them have been on the books since the seventies, so we're also updating them, so. A lot of progress in the city. Next, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the February eleventh, twenty twenty-five meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Member Lovins. Second?
I'll send it.
Second by Member Neiman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain by.
Abstain as well.
And, and. Mr. Judd, I'm sorry, praying for it. Uh, next, we have another State of the Address by Superintendent Rick Wolf of the Dayton Independent School District. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, sir. This is gonna be broadcast up there for everybody.
Thank you, sir.
So good evening, and thank you so much for allowing me to be here. As sit-in Mayor Joe Neary said, my name is Rick Wolf, I'm current superintendent of Dayton Independent Schools. Uh, this is my twenty-fifth year in Dayton schools, so I started here back in January of two thousand, I think, when that young lady right there was getting ready to graduate uh, from high school and started as a permanent sub and was a English teacher. Football coach, baseball coach, dean of students, athletic director, director of teaching and learning, and now with Mr. Jaber retiring, one of my wonderful, close friends whom I miss dearly, I am blessed and honored to be the new superintendent. Thanks to, behind me, I've got Miss Diane Huff. She's, Miss Huff, I'm following in her footsteps from the standpoint that, now, I think Miss Huff went to school here, correct? Miss Huff went to school here, so I did not follow in her footsteps there, however, she taught here her entire career, she taught math, she was a high school counselor and was thirty years? Thirty-four years, and now has been on the board how many years? Fourteen years, so I bleed green, she also bleed green. Um, so, but Miss Huff is wonderful, our school board is, is incredible, we deeply care about kids, so. Um, that's the one thing that I think, um, you know, the one thing that I love doing as superintendent is being in our schools. Um, I know about ninety-eight percent of our students' names. Um, from preschool head start all the way to seniors, something I enjoy doing, so just want to share a few things, kind of like the highlights. One of the things that's not on here, uh, we have been collaborating with the city, uh, City Administrator, uh, Mr. Fawcett there and Mayor Baker, we've had some wonderful meetings with them. I think we've had four or five, um, and we could just continue, I just think the, the more we collaborate, the better, for the school and the city, uh, just to make, you know, I love this place. Um, I consider this, uh, place my second home, uh, probably maybe my first home, I'm here more than maybe I'm at my house. Um, but I absolutely love it, and so I want, one of my goals as superintendent is to get everybody, uh, that's not from this place to feel the same way I do about it. And so I think the more that we can collaborate, the better. Uh, so you can see the very first slide there, State of Schools, our mission statements to inspire, engage, and grow each of our students. Those wonderful individuals right there, uh, I believe Miss Kelly's in that picture, isn't she? There you go, Miss Kelly's in that picture right there. So that wonderful, that's our co-ed cheerleading squad that won the region championship and competed in the state championship this past, uh, January, I believe. When they competed, there were some wonderful individuals, but, uh, they, they made us wonderfully proud there, and I had to put them right on the front. Um, so our first, the second slide there, our very, our, one of our very first is so important to us, our first priority is our family partnerships. Um, parents can't do it alone, the schools can't do it alone. We, you know, we've heard the expression, it takes a village to, to raise a child. Um, it's so important, and one of the things you guys have probably seen us out and about in the summers. Uh, one of the things we will be doing this summer is every week, we'll either be having a party in the park, or we'll be delivering ice cream out in the community. Unity, be at the parks, or that may be us hopping in one of our school vans, playing the ice cream truck music that we all can remember growing up as a, as a child and driving these streets, finding, finding students. Um, and you can see there, right there in the middle, Lincoln Elementary School for three years of very, I want to say they named twenty different schools or school districts, Lincoln Elementary School for the third year row has been named a family-friendly school by the Pritchard Committee. And our high school's in the midst of, um, applying for that as well, we should get that designation in the spring, that's something we're super proud about, but just getting out in the community, and I don't care how old you are, young or old, everybody loves ice cream. And so same thing with parties in the park, we get out, we grill some hot dogs, throw some football, uh, something we're very proud of, and something that we focus a lot of time on. Next thing is our focus, the next slide there, Jared, is literacy. So I'd like to share this with everybody, if you see that baseline, fall of twenty-one, twenty-two, we just came back from COVID. In school, full-time, uh, you can see, look at those numbers, so that if we see second grade, there is no score there. Um, because our second graders at the time did not register a score. Third grade, that one point five means the average score of our third graders at the time was at the first grade, fifth month, in the nineteenth percentile, uh, in the nation. You can go all the way down that, that list on the left-hand side, fast forward to the right, the most recent benchmark we took, our second graders were reading at the second grade, fifth month. Uh, the fiftieth percentile, Lincoln Elementary School itself is averaging the fiftieth percentile. Um, you can see highlights there, fifth grades at the fifty-eighth percentile, reading almost at the sixth grade level. Um, and then if you move down to high school, we did not include seniors, we have so many, we have roughly a hundred and fifteen juniors and seniors and ninety, over ninety of them leave our building throughout the day. They go to Gateway, they go to the Area Technology Center, they go to, um, Young Scholars Academy at NKU, our, one of our goals is to get them off our campus, go experience the real world outside of the four walls of the city of Dayton. But you can see, so we don't have the senior score because it's, it's not a full, true reflection of seniors. But you can see there where our average is and the growth that we've made, so this is a focus of ours non-stop. We partner with the Reading League out of the state of New York, it's a nonprofit organization. Uh, the next slide there, YSA, that stands for Young Scholars Academy, our school board four years ago, three years ago, um, put money, just said, we want to provide our students with an opportunity that not all school districts provide, um, their students. So those students right there and a few more that were unable to make our school board meeting, they don't come to Dayton schools, they are full-time NKU students. And they, they work, they work on their high school credits and their college credits. Our current senior class, and we'll look at this here in a little bit, not just these students, our current senior class, uh, has earned over, has earned a hundred, eight hundred, I'm sorry, eight hundred and twenty-one dual credit college hours. So that means a class, you know, right, people that have been to college before, you take a class, it's three credit hours. Um, so our students, uh, have garnered eight hundred and twenty-one, that does not include the classes they're currently in, so they should be up over a thousand, uh, this year. Uh, but that's something our school board pays for, so we pay for transportation, we pay for, uh, the food, not the food at NKU, but the food at Dayton schools, we pay for books, we pay for um, their classes, we do the same thing for Gateway. And so we have students that go to Gateway, come to our campus first thing in the morning, go to Gateway, uh, take two classes while they're at Gateway. Uh, they earn up to twenty-four college credit hours, those students right there will get sixty college credit hours, all funded by our school district. Just feel it's so important that we help these, so, so many student freshmen in college students drop out, not just Dayton students all over the country, drop out of college freshman year. Well, but when you're going into college with sixty college credit hours or twenty-four, a little bit easier to hang on a little bit longer, so. Uh, super proud of that, if we move on, this is something new. Um, we'll, we'll actually be looking for, I'll love for volunteers for this. Um, I missed, I missed one there, didn't I? I apologize, I'm, I'm super excited about this. Project one, is that what's next, Jared? Okay, project one. I'm sure everybody can see this going on, right, pretty soon, we will have one campus. And I am, I'm happy to say this, I just found this out today, that, uh, please mark your calendars for August the fourteenth. Is gonna be our community-wide grand opening of that facility, so August thirteenth next year will be the first day of school, that's when we're gonna kind of break it in with our students, but August fourteenth on that evening, either at six or seven o'clock, I'll let you know. Um, we'll have big ribbon cutting and grand opening, just so everybody can take a tour of the facility, um, but that is going to do wonders. Davis Field, although I love it, I have fond memories of that place. Is one of only two grass fields currently standing, the other one, um, the school down the road just recently, uh, is gonna put turf in, so we now will, uh, be just like everybody else, which I'm super excited about, and the fieldhouse is getting ready to come in, if you look at that picture, that's behind Lincoln, to the right, there's a concrete slab. That's where a thirty by thirty fieldhouse will go, uh, there will also be a weight room there, that's the concession area and, uh, restrooms, that concrete structure in the middle. And then we will have three or four lanes of a track straight away. And then the field will be right there, so we will start to see wonderful improvements coming up in the next month. Super excited about that, but please mark your calendars, August fourteenth, I want everyone to be there, I want the whole entire city and alumni and everybody that can ever come back. Um, next is early childhood, this is a super, this is a big focus of ours, ninety percent of our brains developed by the age of five. So if kids don't have early childhood experiences, if they're not being read to, if they're not in a structured environment, they are going to be behind. It'd be like us all lining up, all of us lining up to, uh, for a race, and you guys all start at the starting line, and I'm fifty yards back. Um, I'm in trouble. Right, so it's so important, but as you can see there, I'm not gonna read all that to you, uh, we still, we continue to see improvements. Uh, more and more kids come into kindergarten with early childhood experiences, it's so important that that happens. Part of our parties in the park and part of our ice cream trucks, as we, as we go around, we'll look around and say, hey, who's that little one over there? They need to be in preschool, not everybody knows, not everybody knows that three and four-year-olds need to be in preschool, so that's one way that we, um, educate people. The next slide, this is something new we did this year, it's called Portrait of a Green Double, so we did, we interviewed students, teachers, staff, school board members. We had three or four community meetings, uh, and we asked them, what do we want our students to know, be like, and be able to do? On the left-hand side, those words, character, leadership, inclusion, communication, learning, and wellness, that's what repetitively came up. And so what's gonna come out of this Portrait of a Green Double, starting with next year's sixth graders, eighth graders, and twelfth graders, at the end of the year. They are going to have to give defenses of learning, so Faith's gonna have to do this, she's gonna have to stand up in front of a group of people, that could be you. Right, we're gonna invite anybody that, anybody wants to be a part of that, I'll send something out to Mayor Baker, it could be your school board members, teachers, they're gonna have to get up and talk about how did they inspire, how did they engage? How did they grow? How did they do those during their time of Dayton Independent Schools? And so that's something we'll continue to do, but we will be looking for all kinds of volunteers, you don't have to sit in all of them, now, you don't have to, we have fifty seniors next year, you don't have to sit in all fifty of them, you could sit in two or three or one, I just think it would be good for all adults to see, and it'll be good for our kids. Everybody in here, in some point in time, in their job or their life or their career, has to speak in front of others, and so it's just teaching our kids that. So we're super excited about that, because see, growing, we are always growing, everybody's growing. Um, we have the Inspire Hope Series, we have someone each month that comes and speaks to our high school, our students, seven through twelve. Uh, we had, um, Donna Murphy come, she is the first Miss Kentucky basketball player, we had Dr. Atef McHale, who's a radiologist. We had Dr. Kevin Miller, who's a graduate of Dayton Schools and a, and a, um, one of the best cardiologists in the entire area, right, myself? Related to you. Yes. Um, so we have that once, once a month, we have a therapy dog named Baylor, kind of like you guys have Cooper, we have Baylor. Um, we are a certified energy bus school, I don't know if anybody's read, uh, John Gordon's book, The Energy Bus, uh, but it focuses on positivity, social emotional learning. We'll have updated numbers, it'll be just as good as that, but our seniors last year, ninety-five percent graduation rate, eighty-three percent post-secondary already, that means they're ready for the next stage of life. You can see what our seniors got for dual credit hours, what we currently have, we do focus on attendance. Um, if a kid does, if Faith does not show up to school, we're calling home. Right, we need, kids cannot learn if they're not in school. Um, and then one thing we keep arguing for and just fighting for is opportunities and experiences for our kids, that's what they need more than anything. Um, and then if we turn the page there, upcoming, uh, I would love for the city and, you know, as we talked about with, uh, Jay and Ben, I'd like the city to be involved um, in any way, shape, or form, so if you see those KSA testing, you can't really be involved in that, that's, uh, that's just something we have going on, you can cheer us on or keep us in mind while that's going on, but all of those other activities, feel free to join us, you can shoot me an email, um, Jay has my cell phone number, Ben has my cell phone number, you feel free to text me, call me. Um, the more that we can collaborate and work together, the better. What questions, anybody have? Do see every day, it's good. Yes, ma'am? No, so we have, we currently have seven seniors that are at NKU, uh, in the YSA program, we have ours Gateway. I don't know the top number off the top of my head, I'd probably say eight to ten seniors. Um, we have another four to. We have another four to five out at the area technology center, which is like vocational school or they're, they're doing welding or a trade of some sort. And some of those classes are dual credit, I would say we have about. Little more than a third. Yeah, what, I just. Yes, that, that's my, what I, like we said before, I want to provide our students any and every opportunity that we can provide them. And so that's one of the things that we've tried to push, push forward so that they can be a part of. So a lot of students, so a lot of them gets certification, so, and I just think of one or two, there's one or two young men that I can think of that got a. Certified in welding and. By the end of high school, and so then they, one young man was, I don't think he is driving to Carrollton anymore, but. He graduated on Friday and on Saturday, he was driving to Carrollton for his job making 30, $40 an hour in the welding industry. Well, we pay for it. Yes. Correct, yes. Yes, so. Yep, yes. And there's benchmarks you have to hit, you know, ACT benchmarks and other, like YSA is a little bit more difficult to get in. To than Gateway, but you still have to meet. Your college readiness benchmarks and become college ready, so yeah, it starts his junior year, that's why. And juniors that go to Gateway get 24 college credit hours, now they can take more, they, they would have to pay for those, but they can, when we've had students do that too. What other questions do we have?
Superintendent Wolf, it's, it's obvious you're very passionate about this and I, I love that, I, I love the ideas of the activities you guys are planning, the party, the park, the ice cream stuff, keeping people engaged. Especially with the new facilities coming in this year, are there any plans to. Do anything with the sports facilities outside of the normal seasons or when they're not being used by the students such as softball leagues or. Like football or recreational basketball, anything like that?
So that's a good question, we have, we have not, I have met with King's Hammer two or three times, King's Hammer once, they, they wanted to use the field last year. But they're, they're chomping at the bit to do that, we have not discussed that yet, I would love to. Look at other ways that we could use, use the facility. Because to your point, you know, it'll be heavily used in the fall, our kids will go on there for OPA, old school recess, what we used to call it, now it's OPA, organized physical activity. So they'll be on there for that. But once again, I'm all for, if you have ideas or suggestions, I'm all for, we don't have anything concrete in place right now.
And then secondary question here, and this one's less exciting, I guess, but as I was beating the pavement campaigning this year, I ran into a gentleman that lives within Dayton. But his student doesn't go to a Dayton Independent School District, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
So a few years ago, the state, it used to be you had to go to school in the city in which you live. And then school districts had to release the ADA average daily attendance money to that school district, a few years ago. The state got, did away with that, so for example, we just had two students today. Who we got enrollment papers from, who do not live in the city limits of Dayton, they live outside of Dayton, they want to come to our school. So that is, public education is becoming more and more competitive in that nature. So yes, do we have kids in our city that don't attend Dayton schools, we do. The goal is for that not to happen, we want to try to keep as many of them here as possible. But it's one of the things, I don't know if you guys have seen our, we are Dayton videos, we keep pushing those out, we had a teacher version, a student version. We're getting ready to have a parent version coming up here soon, I'll make sure I get those to you so you can send them to. City Council, but. The other thing that I want to do is push our school district out as much as possible, now I don't want to go to other school districts and say, hey, as kids are walking out and say, come to our school, I'm not going to do that. However, just get the positive word out and I want us to tell our story as opposed to somebody else telling our story. For example, another thing we're doing is everybody in the city of Dayton, probably by the end of March, we'll be getting a mailer in the mail. That just highlights a lot of what I just shared with you, we plan on doing that a couple of times a year, so the more that we can get the word out, the better.
Yeah, just to clarify, the resident I spoke to seemed to think that he couldn't have his student come to Dayton, even residing in Dayton. Any thoughts on that at all?
No, I, anybody that lives within these city limits or outside the city limit, please tell them to come. Come to Dayton.
Part of the confusion is the city boundaries do not match the school district boundaries in all cases. Velo, for example, the Marina and out, Mary Ingalls is Campbell County School District. Rose Drive and up on River Point is Campbell County School District, I know in the past Dayton School District has attempted to annex them. But Campbell County doesn't want to give them up. So you'll see a Campbell County bus coming into town every day, picking up a couple of kids and taking them all the way out to Campbell County. But that's a matter of the school boundaries, especially on the east side of town, do not match the Dayton boundaries.
That's a good point, so we, we have actually had, so the. Kind thing to do amongst school districts is if we have someone from, take Velo for example, comes to our school, they want to enroll, we are supposed to tell them. You're in the Campbell County School District, you have, you're supposed to go there. Over the summer, we do accept, we, we accept, depending on, I just mentioned, we had students that just came to us. Today, a lot of times when the school year is in session, it depends on the grade level in which a kid wants to enroll. Depends on the personnel that we have that is able to service any student. So it, that does get tricky, because I think it's mainly Velo and some parts of Route Eight that are not, are considered Campbell County School District. Okay.
Yeah, up on Rose Drive, yeah. Correct, yeah, and, but they pay Campbell County School taxes, not Dayton School taxes.
Correct.
Well, just watching what your staff did through, you put the numbers up there through the COVID times. And the uproar that that caused, especially for kids and parents, the job that your staff did during that time was absolutely amazing. As a heck of a transition for everybody. You mentioned getting the city more involved with the school district and vice versa. How can we get the kids to pay attention to what's going on in the city, like come into city council meetings or board meetings even? Or volunteering with community service.
Yes, I can make, I can make that happen, that was, so we, the meeting we had with the other day, which was wonderful. We took our, I met with our fourth, fifth and sixth grade Lincoln Elementary School Student Council. And just talked to them about. What do they like about Dayton, what do they want to improve about Dayton, and I told them to specifically focus on just the park area, because I didn't want to. Have them talk about everything in the city, so we focused on the park area. And then they brainstormed a list and then I set up with, with Mr. Fawcett, Mr. Baker, we set up a meeting up at Dunutasa. And we, alley up there was phenomenal, served all of us, hot chocolate, I didn't want to give the kids actually caffeine and send them home to parents, they probably wouldn't have been happy about that. So we got hot chocolate and they shared ideas. Yes, and they, they were excited, I bet, I bet it's every day that since then, I, I'm, I'm in the buildings every day. I have a sixth, fourth or the sixth grader stop me, hey, have you, have you talked to Mayor Baker, are they going to put a Gaga ball pit, are they going to do this, are they going to do that, they're, they're excited. So I think things like that, I would love to have students come here and present, I'd love to have those YSA kids come here and present. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be as long as I'm talking, I'm talking much longer than I normally would like to be, but. I'm happy to bring them here, the more that we can be involved, like in that instance right there, like if there's a Gaga ball pit that's put in, if there's a. Pickleball court that's put in, whatever upgrades are made, like those kids are going to be so excited. To use that and they're going to be proud of it and they're going to tell other kids, hey, that was my idea. You know, I, I was, I said that, I told them that, so I think the more that we can do that. And whether it's once or twice a year, maybe, maybe once in the fall, once in the spring. Student come here and present, they could just talk about their school experience or whatever you guys feel, I just think. They probably don't even know where city meetings are held, right, I mean, and let's be honest, they're teenagers, right, now I love teenagers, but you know, a lot of times kids. They don't, they pay attention to what's going on in front of them, not always around them, so the, we could do that.
Question, do you, um, does Dayton School have FBLA?
We do have FBLA, yep, we do, we, I don't know that we competed, we have in the past have went to FBLA competitions, I don't know that we've done that this year, but we do have FBLA. One other thing I thought about this, we, we started this, I, I'm super excited about this. I didn't mention this, I apologize, on the Portrait of a Green Double slide, there's a Green Double Pride Award, we started that this year. And that's just someone, anybody, Joe Neary could win that award, right, anybody in the city could win, it doesn't have to be a school employee. It's just someone that exhibits Green Double Pride or one of those six competencies listed there. We've had teachers win that, we had a young lady that's a graduate of Dayton Schools, she takes pictures. She's just not affiliated with our school at all, she won that award. And so I'll send information to Jay or Ben about how you could nominate someone, or maybe you guys think, hey, Joe Neary should win that award. Someone nominate Joe Neary, right, and Jessica Levin should win that award, whoever, right, it's just the way to recognize people that have, take pride. Not just in Dayton Schools, but just in Dayton in general.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf, any other questions for the superintendent? Thank you, sir.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Now normally, we, the next thing is open to public comments regarding legislative items on the agenda, the last time I had to do this, we had 16 orders and ordinances. Tonight we got none, so we'll skip that part of the audience participation and go directly to the department directors monthly reports. I don't have Ben's little wheel, so I'll go by how they were printed out, code enforcement please first. Weren't expecting that, were you? Ladies first.
So you have a copy of my report, I'd just like to. Go over the little slide in there. When Jay started and we got together and we talked about some things, we're like, there's too many vacant properties in the city. Some of those have been sitting for 20 plus years. So we addressed those, you saw on the slide, five of those were demoed, they were in really bad shape. Dangerous, 26 are rehabbed and are now owner occupied, 11 were rehabbed and are being used as rental properties. Six are currently for sale and 12 are in the process of rehabbing and three are currently in the foreclosure process. So we've, you know, taken a lot of. ISOs out of the city. And. Yep, turn them into tax. Properties and. On the rental inspections, bill is 99.7% complete, so we're right there. And I think that's about it. Any questions?
Any questions? No.
Like I said, my, email me or call me anytime if you have any problems, concerns or questions.
I have a question. When you get to 100, do you just start over?
We get to. Yes, so we're doing those every, every two years, so it'll start over on the second year. And those are due to start, I think in June or July. Yes. So then we'll restart, he is still doing, you know, we're working with some landlords that had some issues. They had to get contractors in and that all takes time, so there are a few kind of scragglers that are waiting to make some repairs, but other than that, he's pretty much caught up. Yes. Sure. Yes, yes. Alright, thank you.
Great job, Cassie.
Thanks.
Next, Chief Schaefer.
Other than the report I submitted, with the weather breaking, we're getting out, doing a lot of training, flowing some water, you'll see us down on Third Street or behind flood wall mostly, but. Aside from that, any questions? Just from the winter and the salt got in there, it's really just needed clean, so yeah, we were in Newport's Ambers for a couple of days. Yeah. Knocking wood for now, keep it going, yeah, we're back in that, but I've met.
Are you still using the training facility down on Third?
Yes, we, we still need to finish, finish doing the inside of it, but we did, we got a smoke machine. It should be coming in, we use, smoke it up. And you know, problem flowing water on there, you kind of got to shut down Third Street for a little while while we're doing that, so. We do some evolutions there, but if we're just going to practice on the pumps, we usually just go behind the flood wall and throw it out there, but.
Water the water.
Yep. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, chief, let's do another chief, Haffill.
Okay, you had my report for the month, February was a little bit busy just with the weather. Luckily, it's breaking now, so. Like I said, we're, we're really busy. Three of our new vehicles came in, so they have been out and about, you might see them out on the street, the shiny SUVs. And. I think it's, I think that's all I had, we have a new recruit. Caleb's going to be starting the academy at the end of the month, so he'll be gone pretty much all summer, so. That kind of stinks for us, but we usually. Get by and he'll be ready for the fall.
Six months of academy?
Usually 20 weeks, but you got a couple holidays in there with Memorial Day and possibly Labor Day, depends on when he gets out, on 4th of July, so that, that extends it a little bit further. Yes, so. In conjunction with Campbell County, I was involved in the interview process with the social worker. We had a good group that was in the first group, we had one hired out of that. Some background checks didn't pan out on some, so we had to go for round two of the interview process, which we came up with the, the second social worker. They actually started on Monday. And they'll get equipped with just kind of how things run, are running out to the county and how they. Operate their day to day operations and then after that, after this week, they'll start down here. We've already met last week and just told them kind of a heads up on what to expect, I gave them our yearly numbers of domestics that we have, mental illness. And, and things like that, just to give them a, a heads up what they, what they'll be looking for, look forward to. Yes. Yes, yeah, so. We kind of talked about just what to expect and how much they're going to be down here just dealing with mental illness, families in need. They're there to provide them with resources is the key thing, so. There'll be some growing pains to figure out when they need to come out, when they don't need to come out, what can wait for tomorrow, what, what needs to be addressed right now, so. I'm excited and I think all the officers in Bellevue and Dayton are excited to see him, so it's a, it's a really useful tool. Yeah, one incident, like I said, we, we brought somebody to the hospital for a mental illness, mental crisis and we were there for six hours. So that's taking somebody off the street for six hours, leaving an officer here by themselves and they have to rely on Bellevue if backup's ever needed, so this is a huge thing for us and the city of Bellevue.
And I see on your reports. 57 traffic stops in the month of February, which is. Great.
Which is good, given the weather conditions and the road conditions.
And I know not everybody looks at the data, but 38 parking complaints, that's more than one a day. Those are the kind of things they're dealing with all the time. I'd also like to point out expired registrations that you guys are really cracking down on.
Yeah, that's, that's been a big one, I'm not, I, I don't have my yearly, but I'll, I'll bring that to our. Yeah, that's, that's been a big one. I'm not, I, I don't have my yearly, but I'll, I'll bring that to our session that we're gonna have in April for the yearly report. I think we're somewhere around, I think last year we set at three hundred and fifty, I think, for expired tags.
I know I just got my renewals for my cars. And I want everybody paying up, just like I do.
Well, some months, actually thirty-eight's kind of light. We're usually around fifty to sixty a month for parking complaints. Yeah, it's continually gonna get down, yeah, as long as people are complying and fixing their cars and renewing what they need to renew.
Those are the kind of calls you like, though. I see very little, very few calls here for domestic violence or anything like that or family.
Other things are dwindling, yes. And, and I think I've given kudos to, to Jay and Cassie about that. And that's bringing families, more families into the city where they are investing into the city. And we don't have, we have less rentals, we don't know. We would have a week that goes by that we have no idea. You know, we get a call, we're like, well, where did this person come from? You know, Earlanger, Covington, or Cincinnati, you know, we had no idea. So now people are investing in the city, they're living in the city, and we're seeing less and less activity. Our activity when I first got here, we, we had eight hundred calls a month, CAD calls. We're down to four hundred, so it's been cut in half within, within ten years. So, and I expect that to even go, go lower.
Part of that is changing, yeah, to of the kids, thanks to the school district.
Yes, the school has helped out. As you see, the added control or juveniles, I think juvenile issues that we have have gone down tremendously. Vandalisms that we used to have all constantly from kids looking for something to do. And vandalizing stuff has gone down. I think we had two, two issues last month, you know. But, I mean, every, everything's going down as, as everything else is progressing. So everybody, I think, is, is winning during this, this transition that the city's having, so.
Much safer community. Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you. So our cruiser just drove by and will come by, you can take a look at it.
Senor Lucas, I believe you're the last of the department reports. You've been busy.
No, not at all. We made it through the winter and our equipment held up really, really good. Pays to have nice equipment. Salt got a little low, but we made it through. And we're getting ready to do our changeover to summer, lawnmowers, chainsaws, stuff to get. And, yeah, I mean, just all in all, a little bit of everything. Met with the school again today about the chain link fence and stuff, and I'll talk to you about that tomorrow. And then went down, metal, metal solutions, possibly to add more garbage cans throughout the city. Or black ones like we, like we have out on the streets now. But other than that, I mean, everything's going good right now. And equipment's held up good, yep.
Any questions for Mr. Lucas? Thank you, sir. So that does it for the department directors' monthly reports. Next, Mr. Fawcett, the city administrator report.
Thank you, listening here. So I just wanted to update you a little bit on the law situation. So my kicker is reaching out. They have asphalt companies, estimates of the cost, asphalt reports there in the building park. And he is giving that information. He's also giving estimates for striking nets fencing. And so I talked with him today, he's gonna have all that information for you. And the other thing is that we talked, I counseling about the opportunity on a temporary basis, being able to keep our area here for a little while. Three courts there, so we're in the process of constructing it. And that up, making, making public. And it might be just temporary, maybe we can actually paint some lines on there, we'll talk about. Good place to, a temporary course until permanent. Talking to the superintendent, we've talked a little about our meeting with the council of Lincoln, who's a great meeting. The TASA, I think because they had fifteen kids there probably, they were, they were quite remarkable. Very poised and very articulate about they were saving the park. And they have some great ideas, something we didn't even thought of. So we are already in the process of trying to accomplish, the big one is a dog up pit, so that's kind of our number one priority. But there's other things that they talked about, and I think the park board is also making some recommendations about investments into the park as well. So I think this year, we're gonna see a real transformation, transformation of the building park. We're also working with the school about some other improvements in terms of playground, but it's early stages and I can get to talk about that. And then, so an update on the front comments, states two and three. Two weeks ago, the mayor signed a local agency project development checklist, which is the mayor's last thing to ask to sign before you go out for bids. I've talked with one person that's six, a high priority, saying approved by K Y T C, doesn't have to understand, it's just us. So we're hopeful that that will happen any day now. It is to send out the construction, are already drafted, ready to go. Soon to get the word, take the button, publish it, advertise it. Sessions, annual event, this building will be on the hard part from April twelfth. Southern Republic, we'll come, starts nine AM on Saturday, twelfth, April, one till probably four o'clock. It's also the same day as the parade hunt, so we'll probably get a great one at the same time, that is, we tell, we'll come back. And this is the final week of the community activities initiative where we work with help, coming and moving. And we're convinced to encourage people to come back to the cities that they have been really carried because very successful. We still have kicked it off of Bellevue. This is the final week as we call cities are participating. And I want to shout out to those cities that participated, we can get why. Chamber Converse, we were all there.
Can we say K Y T C donuts or something? Seems we're waiting on them a lot. The survey that came out. When is that gonna be published for John Q. Public to see?
We all just wait. We all first.
It's on the website already.
Oh, is it? Great, thank you very much. Reading through the comments, I think, is a real learning experience for all of us. And I'm, I'm interested to hear everybody's feedback once you go through the questions or the answers that the citizens gave on it. Pretty interesting. Much more positive than in the past.
Yeah, I've known that I was first to ask here, because of the hot weather, or whether hot weather, hot weather.
Boy, compared to our surrounding cities, some of them are in really bad shape. Ours are a lot better. Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, thank you. Any que, any other questions from council? All right, that opens it up.
I just have a quick question, sorry. So I've never played pickleball, so I, maybe I don't have a love of the game yet, because I haven't played it. But I'm almost tired, tired of hearing about it. So what, what is stopping us from tomorrow painting lines on that skate park over there and calling this done?
Well, we can just talk about it tonight, there is nothing to stop it, just get the seat, whoever, who's able to do it. And I talked to the people that night, I don't think there's any problem. He said she could put down tape there clearly, but we have a night, it's a kind of permanent. Or is that, I permanent, that's that's something we call the problem. So the added ball, up to be out, apparently, would be expensive. Yeah, I would like to prepare.
The, the only thing that I would, the question that I have is the availability, because it's gonna get busy from what we've learned in the past of having just pickleball inside the BFW and the Eagles. When people hear about it, they're gonna flood to the place. So just a suggestion that we put some kind of parameters in place to, people can't just go and play willy-nilly and, and that, and that, you know, the skill levels are different. I believe that we should kind of come up with some kind of parameters where time people can play, skill levels, just think, because it, it will get busy. And then, once the pickleball lines go up over there and people find out that there's pickleball in Dayton, it, it, it will get busy. So that's just something that we can should consider and make a head of.
I would honestly say just open it up. If, let's say Rick's crew decides they call me tomorrow and they want to paint the line. Not saying you are, I'm just stating. Open it up for a week or two, I can walk down here, terrorists can look out the back window, see if it's getting busy. But so many cities put it in, like, we're playing Thursday night at Newport, and I'll probably come down tomorrow and do a little test run out here, let you know how it goes.
In a case like that with Newport, where the other public places, what city resources are required to make sure that everybody's being civil and not taking up the courts? I mean, are we gonna have to manage the use of the courts?
No, it's pickleball's a calm sport, no contact. It's not like basketball where someone's gonna get physical. It's pickleball with a paddle. I don't think anyone can get violent.
Not necessarily, that can happen anywhere.
I mean, you might have kids that tear it up, but that's a whole nother story. But it's predominantly an older demographic. I don't know the right words.
What you've seen in other communities is it's kind of self-policing?
It, it depends on how big it's gonna get, because I anticipate Dayton being the pickleball capital of Northern Kentucky in the future. So who knows? So that's what I'd like to put in parameters, or talk about putting in parameters now. So like we, like Jessica says, we open it up, Jessica and I police it for a while, see how it goes. Maybe at the next meeting, we come up with some, some kind of use it, maybe it's the Parks and Recreation Department, or maybe the parks direct, can come up with something that we can, maybe even put a sign up and say, these are our Dayton rules. Respect the place, this is temporary. And just be transparent with the people, say, hey, this is just a temporary makeshift to see what we're, what we're dealing with, respect the place. And then, because we're gonna monitor it, and I'm sure, like Jessica said, we'll be able to, to know what we're gauging. But I really do anticipate with the, just the infrastructure of Dayton, with all the, the apartments in the back there who play pickleball and just the people that walk on the flood wall, it's just built for something that big. I can see it with, with the one project, and I could just see Dayton being a good pickleball place, especially if we encourage it.
I, I don't doubt that it's gonna be popular, my fear is that it may be too popular.
Yes.
And we need to have city resources, if we need to have city resources to monitor or fix it or whatever. You know, that's gonna be an impact on our budget, so I think we need to take that into consideration.
In, in the time being, like Jessica says, I don't think it will be that way. But I, I, I would say in a year from now, like in twenty twenty-six, when we're having our planning, uh, development or planning meeting, it's such like we're having in April this time. That's something that we could be thinking about, engaging, and just, that's why I just want to throw out there as conversation.
I have a question. So that's a kind of a quickie right here, but we're still putting in the other two.
Yes, those will be permanent. Probably four, four over and and we think we can do three here.
So seven total.
Once, this, we go away one day.
Because you want to, okay. So do other people police it or anything? Like, I've never played before, but is that a thing?
I've never seen any, they, like, they have rules, most of the rules, but that's about it, it's
It's, it's like tennis, to a certain extent. Like, it is a, I don't think, I agree in the future, it could be something big, but currently we're late to the game. And like Bellevue Bats has a league that I plan on joining, and like so many other cities have already established leagues. And so everyone's kind of already signed up now. Maybe next year, we could do something here. But I don't really see us getting that big, only because we share our parks with school and et cetera, and you can't ban anyone from it. I mean, it's just first come, first served, just like street basketball, just like any other sport you play, it's first come, first served. And you want to rotate with different partners, like, that's the fun of it. So, I, I mean, it's just a hangout session for old people. Correct. And if, and if it is something that goes good, I mean, Terrace has started the league that's currently on hold, we had a huge turnout. So in the future, but you can't play at Gil Lynn during the winter, like, things like that are game changers. But...
Yeah, I almost knew that my comment about not talking about pickleball would backfire. But yeah, that's exactly my thought, is it's just like any other park resource, right? Swing sets.
Correct, first come, first served.
And, and I'm, and we have a couple of portable courts that we can already set up, like, we wouldn't have to purchase anything. We can just set the courts up and take them down as we use them in the time being.
Yeah, and the courts.
Very calm.
Okay, I'm, I'm just saying, we need to, you know, if we're gonna have expenses on the backend on this, we're done, no, not until the courts get lit up. And the courts at Gil Lynn will be lit, these will not, unless we put lights on the outside of the building. The plan is to have the lights installed at the basketball court.
Yeah, but Gil Lynn Park still closes and opens, dusk till dawn, so, and I would assume pickleball, it follows the same rule. Even out here, it's the same rule as any other park, dusk till dawn, first come, first served. Let's be done.
I think it's gonna be great. Any other questions for Mr. Fawcett? Nope. Okay, we'll move to audience comments. Anybody from the audience want to talk about anything pertaining to the city?
Anything except for pickleball.
Yeah. Go ahead, give your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is David Cubza. I live at the Gateway Flats Apartments. I'm at Hen Boulevard, whose property manager is Sean C. Scully, who is also the director of the Golden Mile Entertainment and Development District, at least according to his email. He put this, and I'm not griping, I'm asking a question with this reading of his notice that he put, am I too close? Okay. "I am happy to announce that we have added a courtesy police officer to the building. We don't have much disturbance here, but may help me get more sleep. K-9 Officer Robert Spears can be texted at the number from 5:00 PM to 4:00 AM. Outside of that, dial 911." My question is, what is the function of a courtesy police officer? Is there any monetary payment that? I, I just want to know more about this courtesy police officer program.
We have one, Spears just moved into Gateway. They take care of some nuisances on the property, which would be loud music, loud, usually that's what the case is, usually loud noises, disturbances, stuff like that. They could be contacted, or there's a hotline or a courtesy line that'll go directly to their cell phone. And then they could take care of whatever call there, and they do get a cut in rent, not care of whatever call there, and they do get a cut in rent, not, it's not like a, yeah, they don't get paid, they get a reduced rent to take care of some of those issues. Caleb Crawford, our new officer, is gonna be moving into Velo, they have a courtesy officer there now, but he is strictly Ohio, he don't have any type of authority, police authority or anything like that, so that kind of defeated their purpose, so Caleb will be moving in after he's done with the academy in August with reduced rent to take, obviously, between Gateway and Velo, that's a lot more, it's four times as big, you have to deal with a little bit more other issues, we used to have one, yeah, Officer Ross lived at Manhattan, that was kind of a new, new thing, I guess there was swimming after hours, or making too loud of noises after hours, I guess they have a quiet time, so they take care of those issues. Yeah. Yeah, and they like seeing the Dayton Cruiser, or Police Cruisers in the actual lots, and they feel that that's a deterrent also, to deter anybody from coming in, maybe breaking into cars. Yeah.
And I know I like having a police officer in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
A block away, but I'm not gonna help you pay your mortgage, all right? Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, to a certain degree, sure.
All right, thank you. Any other audience comments? No, we'll close that, any new business? Counselor, nothing?
Oh, I was just gonna say, we've got the Eagles Chili Cookoff is on March twenty-second, you need to get your chili there, round three, judging will start by four, and Rick's crew is offered to, they're gonna come be the judges for the Chili Cookoff this year, and then afterwards, you can pay five dollars and, you know, all you can eat, so open to the public, we hope everybody can come by and, you know, bring some chili to be judged, and judge everyone else's chili.
Also wanted to let people know about the Pat Tillman run that's gonna be here, April nineteenth, it's gonna start here on Berry, and it's gonna, it's a pretty big deal, so it's gonna be a lot of exposure to Dayton, and the organ, the person, the lady who's organizing, her name is Tara, she's one of our neighbors, I think she's talked to Jay, and I believe if we get behind her, it could put a very positive light on the city of Dayton, I know there's gonna be a lot of press here, it could get pretty, you know, a nice size five K, sixty, seventy people, I don't know how that resonates in the city, but that's a pretty big deal, I believe, for our city, so if we could get behind her on that, it's April nineteenth.
So it's April nineteenth, and it's a five K?
It's a five K, it's a, for a Pat Tillman five K, Pat Tillman is, he's a veteran who, he was an Arizona State University alumni football player, I believe he went pro, he volunteered to go over, to go to overseas, and he was hit by friendly fire and lost his life, and they have a run, a dedicated run toward him, for him, and it's a pretty big deal, so I really, I mean, if we could get behind him in some, this one.
There are some tires that can fall down, and if you want to just pay, there is a, you are, so, and you can sign up and register online, it comes directly to the, so, in
And just to clarify, it's, in case you're only planning on running three miles, it's a four-point-two miler, because he's number forty-two.
Oh, nice, okay.
Then is it gonna be just exclusively in Dayton, or starting here and ending somewhere else?
Exclusively in Dayton, and I believe that she wants to have a meet and greet before, and the Dayton Eagles has volunteered, not volunteered, we're gonna use their space for after-party, check-in, resources.
Great.
Talking about the old Eagles, though, right, not the actual Eagles clubhouse currently.
What would be a proper way to say that, whenever I'm?
Whatever they want to call their building now.
Okay.
Joe?
Yes, we'll finish this part first, Mr. Wolf, is there gonna be a street meet this year?
Great question, I do not, however, then. I think it's always last, so, unless it's involved, it won't be, I'm, I'm, okay.
Okay, thank you, sir, something quick?
Yes, I did have a follow-up question regarding.
Up to the podium, please.
My follow-up question to the chief would be, well, how many incidents or calls to the building that I live in have occurred in the last year, then?
You may have that information by address generally, but.
No, I didn't know that my apartment complex was a problem.
Having an officer, having an officer living in your neighborhood or in your building doesn't necessarily indicate that there is a problem, I'm sure it prevents problems when they see the police car there, but.
But my manager said it would help him sleep better.
You'll have to get a clarification from him on that, sir, any other new business tonight?
He's not just a resident, though, he's there with the expectation that he's sort of on duty in exchange for a reduced rent, right?
I'm not sure, he would be.
As a police officer who lives in the building, he's gotta deal with them. Well.
I don't know that, he's not being paid by the city when he's living there, only when he's on duty in the rest of the city, so if he were, I'm sure if he were to, as a private citizen, help with an issue, that he's there and he knows how to handle it. And it keeps Cooper in town. If there's no new business, then eight seventeen, I'm a little, a little bit over tonight, I need a motion for an adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Yes, Kelly has the motion, do I have a second, shall I move, Mr. Judd, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.